Pictures.
Think he left. He left.
Okay. Randy Harris.
My question is, is have we donated, allocated any money to the school board? And if so, how much and what was the purpose of that money? I'm interested in about the school that you're holding.
The only thing we've done was for the land on Simpson Road, that's it.
We just authorized them to spend their money.
Their own money.
Their own money.
That was the school board's money.
School board's money.
School board.
They purchased the land.
They've done purchasing. Okay, that's why I want to know what's going on with that. What about you?
They haven't yet, they haven't closed the deal yet, they're still in their surveying stuff.
Okay, that's why I want to know. Okay.
Okay. Okay, that concludes public comments. Mayor Bradshaw.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know my name there, you also have, I did a proclamation for Officer Kenny Riddings, who retired last week, thirty-seven years of law enforcement service with the city of Loudoun, of course, inside the county still, thirty-seven years, I thought was an amazing accomplishment. I'm just asking that would be included, I've already presented, just put that in our minutes for the upcoming meeting. This is a proclamation for Tennessee Donor Services, April is National Donate Life Month. Ask this commission to support that as well. I need to add also, at our April meeting, that we put our confirmation for Ms. Rice as financing budget director.
Okay. We'll add that to the commission meeting on April 3rd.
And TCSA Post Legislative Conference is coming up the end of May. If anybody wants to go, please get with Anita. And across my desk this afternoon, there's a bill coming through Nashville that I'm going to sign a letter of if this commission chose to support it. But I can do another one to reduce the administrative fee on local option sales tax. Could be a significant amount of money coming back into the city, throughout the state. So I've signed on to it, if this commission wants to, I'll wrap up another letter. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Jack Pauls.
Thank the commission for having me here this evening. For your consideration, I think we've got some figures up here on the board. I would like to come to you tonight, discuss the purchase of some industrial property. Capital Maker Greenback here with me tonight. This property is currently not on the market. It's been identified as a piece of property that is being, the owner is interested in selling it at this point. I was here several months ago, we talked about a couple of our projects looming that we hope close soon. Project Panda, for example, would be the one I'm speaking of. That project I'm glad to announce is under contract, it's in a one-hundred-and-twenty-day due diligence period. What I'm asking to do is really, for three million dollars to purchase this property. This property, like I said, is already its own manufacturing. The sales of Panda, Project Panda, will be about one-point-three billion dollars to come to our coffers. Project Eggroll, which are recently sold, was about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So really, at the end of the day, we're looking at about a hundred, or about one-point-five billion dollars. The proceeds of those two sales of those property, combined with that, would allow us to purchase this property. It creates partnership really with Greenback and the county to really make sure this property is something that Greenback wants, as well as the county. The way the current, the property is currently its own, someone could buy it, they can put in a manufacturing facility there, that's fine. This has the potential to be, it could be a multiple of things, it could be a park, it could be a rail site. You know, you could put a million-square-foot building on here and another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot building on here. So this has a real potential to be an economic machine for our south part of our county. And so that's really the reason I'm here tonight. Mayor, would you like to come up and say a few words, or me do the talking? Do the talking, all right, well, he's here in support of this, obviously. So that has just kind of opened up, we've got a few more pictures there. I think the next slide is the actual zone and all the zoning around it. The dark purple shades over there is all manufacturing, that is the parcel. All the parcel that's in front of that is owned C1, which is commercial. So there's not really, what I would say, zone residential around it. Most of it is all on business or manufacturing. The next slide, please. You know, today is Dairy Farm, it's been a dairy farm project for the last fifty, seventy-five years. You know, like I said, the owner is interested in selling it and see it as an opportunity for us to reinvest in our county. That, I'll open the floor up for discussion, or questions that you may have at this time.
When was it rezoned from Act M1?
I don't, I don't know, I assume the owner that last purchased it did that.
Yeah. I assume it was back in the seventies, I don't know when it was.
Yeah, there's, from what I gather, the gentleman that I talked to's father was on an industrial development board at the time, and I guess he had it rezoned back at some point.
And John M. was a longtime school board member in Loudoun County.
Who was?
John M. Hutton. And like I said, a definitely member of the industrial board. It surprised me, like I said, it's been a dairy farm for, I don't know how long. Of course, Mr. John M. has long since deceased, and his son is the one that owns it now. And I know there's been several things come through that, that made some interest. At one time, one guy wanted to buy it to make a private jet port. That's the property, the Amish we're looking at, buying. And part of the farm, which belongs to somebody else right now, just on the other side of the road, is where the rock quarry. People wanted to put in a quarry over there, but I said that if you come up 411 toward Greenback, and you turn there where Fuzz's store is, turn left to go to Greenback. The property is about a fifth of a mile, maybe, or less than that, it's out there on the left, beautiful piece of property.
That's Hutton Road, that it, that kind of goes right down the middle of there.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And back to the proprietor and owner of the dairy farm there. But as far as I, you know, to me, it's, that's in the city limits of Greenback, and it's, you know, if the city, if that's what they want, then we can support, I could support about anything except a rock quarry, which is, that'll go for me.
My understanding, Mayor, they, they met, you guys met, was it Monday night? Tuesday night?
Yeah. I had no one, except one person that was interested in putting the house. The rest of them did not want it. For some reason or another, they keep going back to low income. And I don't see that, but M1 kind of cut my hands tied a little bit as far as what the city can do. And I know Mr. Hutton, whoever comes up with the money, whoever did, he gonna take it and run it.
Yeah, he's been trying to sell, he, whoever shows up with a check in hand, whatever, you know.
I mean, you know, if this commission decides to move forward, I mean, I would also make some recommendations. You know, due diligence period. The reason I'm asking for a little extra money is to actually go through with a Phase One and a hydraulic study, to kind of get an idea of whether what, what we're dealing with. I mean, there's no reason for us to buy something that's not developable, but you know, that's kind of what the pitch is I'm here tonight to talk to you about is, there's really a partnership, like I said, moving forward. Center 75, hopefully we're in the process of, like I said, that's going to come to fruition. That'll, along with the other revenue, will be a million and a half. And so I just see this as a reinvestment in our community, and also looking at the future, the south part of the county.
Hey, Jack, after everything's done with Center 75, how much property's left at Center 75?
Seventeen acres is owned industrial. There'll be thirty-eight multifamily, which we've got slates, we've got some apartments on there. And then there's probably eighteen acres that's commercial, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, in nineteen ninety-nine, we opened up Center 75, that's when it started. And this is twenty-twenty-three, and we've yet to do anything except sell land there. It's not ever turned anything for the county, except we've never got, we'll never get our money back, which I think you always expect that, the ideal isn't supposed to bring all this economic development, all that sort of stuff. I think that was really a six-and-a-half-million-dollar project or something like that.
I think there was some grants associated.
There was a million-dollar grant, so that made it seven and a half, but when, when Jack talks about three million dollars, you're talking about buying the land for three million dollars, there's going to be a whole lot more than that come with it. I don't, I have no interest in what anybody else is doing, I will never support another Center 75. I think that was one of the most gross wastes of taxpayer money we've ever had in the history of Loudoun County. When, when you try to couple that, well, okay, you bring an industry in, what industry are you going to bring into the middle of Greenback? That's not going to be a problem. Where are you going to get the help to bring those, to bring that industry? I can just see all kinds of-
What do you mean, I'm sorry, can you specify what you mean by help?
People that would work in an industry.
We gotta have housing first, and you know, since we don't really have affordable homes, that's a little difficult to this part, but hopefully one day we will.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what that's got, anyhow.
Yeah.
We've been here, we've seen this movie. What he's saying, three million dollars, I need a million and a half, we get money out of that, still, still the money we should have gotten back on Center 75, so.
It's a reinvestment.
Buy or beware.
That, you know, that's fine, that's one opinion, there's ten of you up here, that's one.
The only thing, like I said, is and we've been really trying to, to be have a little more control over what is built and what goes on in the county and especially with, you know, trying to make sure that growth doesn't overwhelm us at one time. The, the proside to this would be that, you know, like I said, if we do nothing, and like Jack said, John M.'s son will sell it. I mean, he's, he's not picky about whatever, as long as you come, if you got the check, he'll sell it. So if we look, you know, if we leave it in that scenario, then the county, nor the city of Greenback, has any control over what happens.
What I thought under M1?
Huh?
What else was allowed, was that on our?
Food, cotton, meat, apparel, lumber and wood manufacturing, furniture and fixtures, printing, claystone glass production, fabricated metals, professionals, scientific and controlling instruments, miscellaneous manufacturing, jewelry, silverware, whatever, transportation, communication utilities, excluded air force and solid waste disposal, all types of wholesale trade, office functions, billboards, sexual, oriented adult businesses. There's a whole slew of special exceptions, but that's a whole different story.
Mayor, are you in favor of this?
Well, everyone wanted that, that I talked to, and that's my job to represent them. If it goes, whoever buys it, they want to go to agriculture. That'd be the only way to get the rock quarry or something like that. But A1, if anyone wants to redo it, it has to come before the, my board. And I think I'm, I would be able to put stipulations on what could go better, is that?
Well, it comes to our planning commission.
Yeah.
And it's not going to be a rock quarry, it's not going to be a mine, it's not, anything that could be horribly objectionable comes to our planning commission at some point, would have to have approval through Fuzz and the different ones like that. So it, it's not quite saying what, just anybody can walk into anything, it's still got to have its approval from the planning commission. I have trouble spending three million dollars just so we can pick and choose what we come in, if that's the argument.
Well, that's, that's part of it, it's the thing about, I mean, right now.
How many total acres?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-five.
With that, you control, you can control, have some control over what's going in there.
Well, not really.
I mean, here's, here's, follow my guys, once it's gone, it's gone. It's no different either, the property, it'll be purchased by someone, it'll probably be chopped up, they'll put a couple warehouses on it. Then, you know, take up a million-square-foot and have twenty jobs. You have the ability to, to purchase it, decide who goes there, and get some quality jobs versus a big box, like let's say, I'm not going to mention anybody, but a, a big, you know, million-square-foot with twenty people in it. That's not what we're trying to do here, we're trying to invest in the community where we have good manufacturing positions, so it sets us up for the years to come.
I can tell the commission right now that Jabbo, well, Jabbo Hutton is going to set, it'll be sold. Just, I mean, it's going to be sold, we're not sitting here saying that it's not, he is ready to sell it right now.
He already got an offer, two-point-seven.
And, like I said, it just, I just dread, I just worry about the fact that-
They diligence with the money.
You know, like Adam read off on a long list of things that could go in there.
With planning commission approval. Jack was talking about-
Those are things that go in there if that planning commission-
Jack was talking about all the things that could be, and it might be, and it would be. I point back to Center 75 and ask him how many jobs and buildings we've got down there.
I'm just saying, it's-
I'm not disagreeing, I understand what you're saying. Three million dollars though, I mean, we could do that all over Loudoun County.
But-
By land protected.
Well, you're saying money from the sale of-
I'm trying to take the, yeah, so what, what I would like to do is obviously give the finance director and the mayor to figure out exactly where these funds can come from. But, you know, the intent is, whenever Center 75 closes, along with the other proceed, proceeds that are closed, to roll forward and reinvest it in this, so yes.
Well, let me ask, ask you this question, and not being smart, if, if it's sold and we had people that decided they wanted to put in Bitcoin mining operation.
Lot of, it can go into M1 industrial with special exception approved from planning.
I mean, just, can we, the county commission say no, we're not going to approve that?
We can't, it's planning, BZ, that stuff, BZ and planning is where all that stuff comes.
Only if it's a project that requires a special exception.
That doesn't come to us.
No.
Just, just zoning, that's all we ever-
Anything under the M1 industrial order, this is-
But we, we wouldn't have, there'd be no stopgap for the commission to say so.
How it can be county, very nice.
But here's the reality, anything that I listed on those M1s, they can do whether we own it or somebody else buys it.
And that's the difference, when you own it though, you control the final product versus-
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Do y'all have a planning commission in Greenback?
The N1 comes through the county.
Want me to put it on for April 3rd, for an up and down vote?
Don't matter to me, better fair, where you going to get the money from first, though?
ARPA, Arthur.
ARPA, I think we dipped that bucket about dry.
You tell me, I mean, this-
I'll put it on if you want.
You tell me.
Has Rabo got any more, do you know if he's, anybody else has approached him about this property lately?
No, the gentleman that's got the money up there has said they had it tied at two-point-seven billion.
Why do they want to do on with that two-point-seven?
They want the rock quarry, hang on, what happened?
They not going to get a rock quarry.
Oh, yeah?
He's spent his two-point-seven, have some pretty green grass, but he's not going to get a rock quarry. I've heard that made very clear down at Planton.
Is that Ed Murphy?
Mike Ross.
Oh, Mike Ross.
There you go.
Heard that today. You know.
He, he owes forty million dollars to the place people he beat out of money, didn't he? If it's the rarity Mike Ross, he's in debt forty million now.
We'll try to get some more information between now and whenever.
I'll put it on for April 3rd.
I just don't like that big piece of property right there on the doorstep with no control over it.
Has that one got sewer?
It will have.
If the sewer project goes through, then, then sewer will be a quarter of a mile, which, in the event that a manufacturer does come there, then we could get grant money through that manufacturer, not the county, to put a sewer in.
All sounds good.
Jack, is rail, is it across that property or attached to it, or how?
It does, it does have rail, I've been in contact with the rail itself, they have looked at this preliminary, topography of the property, it would be possible to put rail there. And so that's the great part about this site, is it gives you multiple, it gives you multiple options from an industrial standpoint. It doesn't have to just be, you know, one big chunk of land. It could have multiple buildings for rail access, which is totally something, we don't have any hundred, you know. When you start to look back, there's no hundred-acre rail site anywhere in the state. And so that would put you in the running. The only one I know, not for sale, we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jack. Matt Planchman.
Good evening. The first item I have is a copier of this large format printer that's registered, these office has. This is a renewal, they already had the machine, and this is a two-year renewal for two-hundred-and-nine dollars per month. It's actually a reduction of about six dollars per month on this renewal, so we have that for consideration. And the second item I have for consideration is the four-house plans for Phase Two. And this is all the interior work and some of the exterior landscape to fix it back to the way it was prior to the, to the fire. And the alteration for the, the-
Change, change orders?
Alternatives, was in the budget.
Fourth of August, pass four-one, good bud.
Yep.
Pass how?
Four-one, anybody want to lay odds on the name, though?
Doctor, no.
Hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars essentially is what it was, it wasn't in the budget committee. And it's, it's for some different doors, it's for some changing and some things.
Counters and windows.
Windows and sinks and stuff like that. And, and Matt's going to try to get us a little better idea, we've, we've got an eighteen-thousand-dollar door and a thirteen-thousand-dollar door, and we're going to kind of find out what they are, but.
I've already been in contact with so many studies presented.
Good, good.
This will be the last phase?
No.
Final phase of nevermore.
Nevermore, nine thousand dollars? No.
I think we're getting surprised off some glass for one of the counters.
Two of the counters.
The two, yeah.
Both sides.
The, yes.
Now, we're still coming up with specs, but it goes from the test.
Get surprised.
Bulletproof glass? Yeah. It'll be a front, bulletproof garage door, or bulletproof- Well, Jiminy's that we'll talk about. Or this courthouse, he's done God, he's done God, he's in there. No, you pride, you said you pride. Do we have a-
They'll be on April 3rd.
Estimated time of completion of this project, I'm-
Four-house?
Yeah, several people reached out to me this week, I'm like, I just-
Ten more years.
You tell them.
This phase is supposed to be completed, they tell me on May the 6th. And then the Phase Two will begin, and they tell me twelve, sixteen months, that's the last time, what they told me.
So that'll be the end of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
Yeah, anywhere from this time next year to another four months.
Okay.
Well, I'm for not holding up any progress with it. It's been a while.
I've got a question, it's not about anything on here, have we gotten any feedback from our, when we requested RFPs, RFQs for our website?
We're currently working on it, getting the specs and stuff to put that out.
Okay, hasn't been put out yet?
It has not.
Okay.
Those two items will be on April 3rd for a vote. Commissioner Randolph.
Yes, sir. We have an opening on our most prestigious board, or our most prestigious commission, Solid Waste. And I resigned last week, appreciate, appreciate my time serving on it, learned more about trash than I ever knew.
I ever wanted to know.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to make a recommendation to put Larry Roland onto our Solid Waste Commission, and hopefully we can vote on that April 3rd. Larry has a wealth of knowledge on the inner workings of the landfill, and I think he'll be a good fit on, on the commission.
That'll be a recommendation from the mayor, we'll put it on April 3rd.
And, and you will be here to walk that through, right?
See.
Commissioner Quillen.
Yes, we are here tonight to talk about what the second district has decided to do with their ARPA money. And I know I'm speaking for myself, I will commit my funds tonight, but wanted to share with the whole commission where our funds are going to go and the general public. I know there's been a lot of people in, in the public that are wanting to know where the funds will be going, how they will be spent. And as for me, I, I wanted a project that taxpayers could see a tangible product from, from my money. I, I guess I didn't want it to go sit in a fund somewhere for years and maybe not get spent the way that it was designated possibly. So we feel like, or I feel like this is a-
You can speak up for both of us, yes.
Okay, we feel like this is an amazing place to spend our money. We have Linnor City Fire Chief tonight, Richard Martin, Linnor City Police Chief, Don White, and Loudoun County Sheriff, Jimmy Davis, here. We had some more folks that were supposed to be here tonight, but I understand they're fighting fires. Some fire chiefs, other fire chiefs, rescue squad, those, those individuals that spend countless hours and their own safety, keeping our community safe. And we feel like where we're heading, our direction with our money is, it will benefit all of Loudoun County. And if there are any commissioners sitting here that have not designated your ARPA funds or have any money left, we would highly encourage you to support our project. We can use a little bit more money than what we are, what we are designating. But I won't say anymore, I'll let Don White come up and tell you what, what we're going to do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure.
Just to give you a little bit of background, and we had a public safety meeting on Tuesday, just to kind of do an overview. And we've been, Sheriff Goddard, now Sheriff Davis, we've, and Chief Martin and, and Chief Flatt, we've talked about our, our main issue for getting our folks trained in Loudoun County. Not just our new people, but we have to do annual training and even mainly quarterly training as well. So we have been utilizing Blount County Sheriff's Department, we've been utilizing Alcoa City, all that, they've got a fire tower, they've got, they've got a training center over there, we use those bridges for decades. I mean, I've been here thirty, I've been in public safety for thirty-three years, we've never had, besides the FOP range, you've been there, it's very difficult to, to meet the requirements that we currently have. So we started talking probably six or seven, eight years ago to try to figure out how to fund it, and we just couldn't come up with the funds. That's just always been a problem, we, we tried to partner with the FBI, probably what, Sheriff, five years ago? We thought we were going to be able to make something happen more in that, one of the outline areas of Loudoun County, which would have been an outdoor range. And as you all know, I, you may remember when Blount County built their training facility twelve, fifteen years ago, they got into a lawsuit because of the noise, and now the lead contaminants, so we're just kind of living a different age. So we kind of, kind of shifted gears two years ago and said, well, what would it cost to build an indoor firing range? And then just encompass that into a, a training center. And then we tried to figure out, okay, what, we kind of know what it's going to cost, so then we're still trying to figure out how to fund it. Well, it didn't meet the minimum requirements for the FBI, so they pulled the plug on their, their funding that they had set aside. Well, now we've got all the different government entities of Loudoun County have got some money, so we thought we'd, we'd maybe come at it that way. So we did the research to see if we could actually fund it with ARPA money, and we understand that we can. So the request would be for, if you've got, I think a lot of the fire chiefs, and we've reached out to, to different commissioners, so you kind of have a little bit of an overview, but it would be a full public safety training area. We've got this property secured that we traded with the Linnor City Utility Board, so it's already pad-ready, it's fenced, it's lit. So that saves us several hundreds, thousands of dollars right there. It's in a central location, just next to the Cibitan football field, right across the railroad tracks on Industrial Park. It's almost three acres, so it fits our, it fits the footprint very well. So we would have a, we would have an indoor, full indoor range, we would have a, under one roof, we would have a training room, we would have a open bay for doing training with, with the fire apparatus indoors. We would have an outdoor training area that would be made up of connects boxes and, and for, for live fire, sim-education-style training with law enforcement, as well as fire training in and out of the two levels of that. And it would also include a fire training tower, which Mayor of City just purchased one two years ago, I believe. And so we put all this together, and roughly, it's going to be about two billion dollars. So we can, we're going to use our, we're going to use our funds, we would ask you if you could contribute to that. We would obviously enter into a MOU, it would allow all our volunteer fire service folks to train. We would obviously enter into a MOU. It would allow all our volunteer fire service folks to train. Uh, and the way it's gonna, we'll be, we'll be doing the construction out of, it'll be in metal. The, the startup of the main structure would be metal. Uh, the, uh, fire tower itself is aluminum and galvanized, so the, so the facility is gonna be there for decades, uh, with minimal, minimal reoccurring costs. The range piece being the probably the, the biggest component that would happen.
Is it gonna be indoor?
Yes.
The ranges.
The range would be indoors. Yeah. And, and we felt like that was gonna be the best, because we just can't try to find a piece of property that's not gonna be a, be a, again, a burden to the community as well as the lead issue. You can't, you got, cause you, you gotta, you gotta do a bullet trap anyway. So when I started pricing it out and we need a, we need a building, it's, it's gonna be, it's cost effective to just go ahead and go that direction. That way you can shoot in low light conditions. You can shoot if it's five degrees outside. And then the other thing, and I, this convention that I think is also another important piece, and I know that, that the fire chiefs that we talked to Tuesday, and as well as, I know the sheriff's got the same problem. Right now, currently, we have to travel either to Blount County Sheriff's Office, or they have, they have to travel with all their fire equipment to Alcoa. Or we have to go to Oak Ridge. So we, we take everybody on a Saturday in the police department. So that means I'm paying every single member of the police department overtime. And the same for fire service, same for the sheriff's department. So it ends up being a lot of money every year. What we will do now with this is instead of taking the whole police department or the whole sheriff's department, the firearms instructor for each agency or the training officer would bring individuals to do, do firearms training. Things that's, things, the things that are mandatory that can be done individually. So we would do it on shift. So that would eliminate that overtime. Now, the, the, the large, uh, training days that we would have, you, you guys have to train multiple people, so it wouldn't affect you as much. But it would be the first time in the history of Loudoun County that we would actually be able to train our own public safety folks in Loudoun County, which I think is huge. And we've got such a great partnership with these other, uh, counties and cities. But we don't know that we're always gonna have that. I mean, you know, the taxpayers of Alcoa and the taxpayers of Blount County and the taxpayers of Anderson County, they're all having to bear the burden to train our folks. And as you know, the liability is just, it continues to mount, uh, on both sides of fire and police. And so we just felt like that this is, this is the time to come together as counties and make sure that all of our folks that are responding to whatever the emergency is, that they have received the best training possible. And we're taking care of our own, our own county by, by making it possible. And, and so that would be the, the request, uh, tonight is if you have, I, I know we're in the eleven hour. You may not have any money left. But, um, the more, the two million is kind of the baseline. I know that we, the fire chiefs, uh, all said at, at that meeting that, that we, they desperately need a live fire burn box. So there's stuff that we would add on to, to the facility once we, once we see exactly what the budget is. So that would be, that would be our request.
So this would include also our volunteer fire departments, Greenback, Philadelphia.
Absolutely.
Teleco Village.
Yeah, your, your, your contribution from county commission makes it, it's a, it's a united front. Every, every public safety person in the county will have access. What we would do, one of the questions that came up is how does that, how does that look? How does that work? So what we would do is we would, we would get with each fire chief from each agency, of course, Chief Martin, who's also on Loudoun County Fire Rescue. And I hate that the other chiefs weren't here tonight, but we never know when an emergency is gonna happen. And it's the last, how many fires was going on? There's been three fires going on somewhere in different spots of the county. So what would basically happen is the, the firearms instructor and the training officers for each agency would come together. And once, once we, we would establish a, uh, basically a, a different certifications for different, uh, pieces of, of the, of the training center. And then they would, they would just, we'll, we'll set up a, a scheduling, uh, document where they can, where we're not overlapping. So at the first of each year, all their mandatory training that they have to do, they would just, they would get their slots for their people. And then when it was open, let's say that Greenback, uh, Fire Rescue had three new firefighters that they wanted to get up to speed and go through firefighter one, and they needed to come down there and, and use the facility. Cause obviously it's not gonna be used every day. Uh, and then they would just schedule that.
And this would, uh, the, the operations part would be come under the Linnor City Police or Department of Safety, that's called now Public Safety.
Right.
A- as far as funding, do you have specific numbers from Linnor City, their contribution, what it's gonna be in Loudoun City?
We're, Loudoun City, we have asked, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the city of Loudoun. Linnor City's gonna fund, uh, well, which including the property, we're, we're gonna be at about one point five.
How much is that without the property? How much cash?
Well, if you got their million, that's two point five.
Well, no, he, the, the property doesn't count though in that number. So how much?
Yeah, so we're, 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 we have a million.
Cash?
Set. Well, close to that. Yeah. I think that's, I think that's what they said that we were gonna be able to put.
What about future maintenance? Who does that fall under?
So we would, we would, the plan would be is, is the, really the only reoccurring cost that we can, that we can see besides the, the HVAC of the, of the main structure, which we know we've got plenty of time. That would be a long-term project. The firing range itself would be, uh, it looks like basically everything that I've done in the research is about five years. That, that has to, we have to pull all the lead and change the, um, the product that, that is in the trap. It's a, it's some, it's a type of ground rubber. That's gotta be removed and the lead's gotta be extracted and then new, that new material has to come in. And that's about sixty, sixty-eight hundred dollars, uh, to replace that, because you sell, we sell the, we sell the lead and then replace it. And then the HVAC, they've been averaging about fifteen years. And that's about a hundred grand to replace the whole HVAC system for the actual range itself. So that, that is something that would, that we would have to, uh, hope, obviously the city would have to budget.
Would the, uh, participating agencies, fire, rescue, police, so forth, would they pay any kind of user's fee yearly to, to use the facility in, in any way?
No. That you, the, the payment would be your, your contribution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I like what Don's saying, and I want everybody to understand this is not directed at anybody in this room, okay? Uh, I think a two million dollar bill you're describing is a very, very conservative number. We're building a little bitty building up here on the back of the county building, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's a four-squared, center-block building, so I, I don't, I don't know about that. Uh, my concerns are this, not directed at you. The last two, and this, this for Rosemary and William, a hundred percent on board. Y'all want to, got no problem. Be aware. Last two projects we partnered up with Linnor City was Harrison Road. That one was missed by four hundred thousand dollars. The county had to pick it up. Simpson Road was missed by a million dollars. The county had to pick it up. Not pointing fingers and making blame, but I, I fully trust what Don's saying, but we all know once you get into con- construction and everything, it's, it could go more. So are there any contingencies anywhere to cover the short files before we get that letter from Amber that says, oh, by the way, we forgot utilities. We forgot this, forgot that. We need another half million dollars. It'll come. It happens every time.
So we just cap it?
Why would that, why would that come back to us if we donate our?
Well, why did Simpson Road come back to us? Why did Harrison Road come back to us? We have the money. That, that's generally why it comes back to us. And, and maybe my biggest concern, I'm, I'm trying to, I told Adam, I was gonna be just as nice about this. I can't hear enough. My head's so plugged up. I don't know if I'm talking loud or quiet. We've seen this happen several times over the years. If the mayor gets mad and has one of his tantrums, he just says, well, the county can't play no more. He held up the ATF money. I mean, it happened. He held up the reappraisal money. It happened because he didn't, what would prevent that from happening? I'm not saying it would. I'm just saying it has happened in the past. What would prevent that from happening again? Uh, there, there's, there's some issues that would come along with this. And again, I support if y'all wanna do that, if you're giving the whole million. I heard you say that. I think that's what you're saying. Your whole million's going up there. So, so that gets you a long way towards your goal right there. Mine, I'll be honest, mine's committed to illegal action with Linnor City for an illegal inaction. So I won't be contributing anything at this point in time, cause I don't know how much that'll wind up costing. But, uh, just tread lightly. You all are newer to us. Those of us that have been there a little bit longer, we've seen it. Those that have been longer than that, we've seen it a whole lot of times. So whatever you do, get it in writing and I would do it like any state or federal grant. When I get the building done, take them your money.
Well, I've.
Reimburse.
Yeah, and I, I trust the men standing before.
I trust those men emphatically. I have no question what these men stand up for.
Absolutely. And, and I think the safety of our county's, the citizens in our county is paramount to anything we do. And the safety of the men that are in charge and all of, all of the, um, the firemen, the policemen, their safety. Their safety depends on their training. And if, if we can provide that here, that, that's where I want my money to go. Um, so I'm, I'm committing tonight. I'll commit my half million from, from CCB.
Do y'all have, I know, I know this may be early, but do y'all have, have you, like an architect? Do you have any, do you have some concrete numbers? I know we all kind of talk, it's, it's hard to, it may be this or it might be that, but do you have some concrete numbers?
Right. So, so this, this, yeah, let's talk about that for a second. So and I, I do agree, it's numbers are what we're dealing with, with government construction. It's all over the board, you know? Uh, so obviously we didn't want to spend any money to, to hire a firm and do their research and come back with a fifty thousand dollar bill, you know, drawing plans and, and, and because obviously this is very, this is preliminary. We had to get to this point to, to figure out what we're dealing with. But I just to say, uh, Mr. Jenkins knows this too. I've, I've had a construct, just kind of a life construction background. So we've done a lot of projects and we're gonna do this project in-house as well. Uh, so I have, I have got numbers from a red iron metal building company. Uh, I did go out and meet with five different range manufacturing companies, which we got. Uh, I've got numbers back for concrete. Uh, I've got, so, so we've got, so we've got, I, I think that we're, it, it could go over. Yes, it could. But, you know, we did the fire department project. I don't know if anybody's went by Station, Station One, uh, just for an example.
I think LCB paid for that, didn't it?
Well, I'm not talking about who paid for, well, I don't know who paid for it, but that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, we, we did that project in, in-house. We, we, we contracted the metal. We did it for probably half of what it would have contacted. We, we had, we had went and had a, an engineering firm come in with an architecture firm and they had started the project. And we, we did it for way less than fifty percent. We renovated the, the basement, the police department and the codes and fire and parks direct for, uh, well, just for example, we did all three of those floors for less than three hundred thousand dollars. We hired an architectural firm and went the full route on the main floor and it cost one point two million.
I don't know how you get by, because down here, if it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't have a choice. You have to hire an architect. We'd love to do that, but we don't have a choice. Can y'all go? I mean, if you're spending that kind of money?
Well, we have to, we have to go. We have to do our same bidding process for the, for the services.
I mean, we have to actually hire an architect, which adds you twenty percent right on top of whatever project.
And we, and we will have, we will have a, we will have an architect. Well, the metal building comes with a full set of drawings. That has to go to the state and get all the approvals. And then we've got, we, we, I've got a meeting Friday morning with an architect who's retired. And he's gonna do, and, and I believe his price is gonna come way, uh, way cheaper than if we hired a firm out of Knoxville to do all the fancy, uh, stuff that they do.
I saw if you knew a way around that, tell Matt Clashman.
I'm not sure. Uh, I mean, we still draw, we still have an architect and we did the drawings, but when you buy a metal red iron building, it comes with a set of, of drawings and blueprints.
It's engineered.
It's, it's an, it's an engineered drawing, so all those things have to go.
It's like the convenience center here in Loudoun.
Waste model.
I mean, this would be a bigger concept, that the same concept.
Well, but, uh, but it's, it's, if you build a eighty by a hundred and fifty or a fifty by fifty, it's still gonna come with a set of engineered drawings.
If we did that tomorrow out here on vacant lot, we'd have to hire an engineer. If we got a metal building, it delivered on a tractor and trailer, we'd have to, we, did, what, what do we do on yours?
Uh, we use their, their.
It was a metal building.
Their metal building drawings.
We just used their drawing.
Yeah, we didn't have to hire an engineer.
We did have a, we did have an architect do the site prep plan.
Yeah, and, and the interior.
I knew we hired somebody somewhere else.
Right, yeah. The metal building, the metal building people have got it down. Pat, they've got it all fixed.
I'm all for that.
When you buy the building, it comes with all of it.
Yeah, it is. So the only thing.
I don't know why we don't have a rescue squad building going up.
We're waiting on that information, man.
What information?
We've actually talked to a contractor and submitting the blueprints and everything that we've been waiting.
Sorry to interrupt you. That just, cause I forget in a minute if I didn't say a thing.
So.
So Linnor City's done a million cash commitment. Million cash commitment. Two hundred million. Thousand from.
We don't have a commitment from Loudoun. That's what we requested.
Two fifty.
The two fifty we requested from the city of Loudoun. We have.
Is anybody else, has sheriff, has, have you guys committed any cash? Is there any other cash commitments?
From the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
I was aspirating. We just gave a hundred thousand dollar a little while ago.
Well, and that would be, and let me just say this, um, as far as that goes. Obviously, your, your, what you would be doing by approving this is gonna cover all the public safety, uh, crews in the county. So, so that's, that's, you know, you're, what you're doing, just like for Loudoun City. If Loudoun City makes their commitment, then that covers the city of Loudoun.
What if they don't?
Then that's gonna be another, that'll, that'll, could be a problem.
It'll be a delay that three.
Well, then it would probably be more of a charge. So they would, cause obviously we've got, we've got to build it. And so we, we've got to figure out how to pay for it. So obviously the, the more people that use it, the bigger it needs to be and the more things that we can add. And we just, I mean, our position, you just take, if you take counties and city and politics completely out of the whole thing, we just want what's best for the, the people that volunteer here, that have volunteered here for decades, the future volunteers. I mean, this is a, this is a fifty-year project. I mean, that, that, that facility's gonna be used for decades and decades and decades. And we, we all, there's probably not anybody, uh, that's in here tonight that's not either had or knows somebody that's had an emergency. And, and the volunteer rescue squad showed up. I mean, and that's, it doesn't matter if it's a medical emergency or a car wreck or your house is on fire. That's who's rolling to your property or to your scene. And we, you know.
Or your chicken.
It's just so, it's so very important. So the, the, you know, the more money that we put together, the better we can make it. And, and like you said, I may be under on my numbers. Once we know what we're, have committed, then we'll get, we'll get right down to it. But we just have to cut back.
It's just gonna, it's just gonna, I'm sorry for interrupting. Is this gonna be a collaborative, a collaborative effort as far as planning the building is what, you know, what needs to be built, what's going in there? Are you gonna input from, from all the agencies or was it?
A hu- a hundred percent. And I, I know that when we talk, everybody didn't get to come to the meeting on, on Tuesday. And I had just put some pictures in a PowerPoint because I just needed to have a picture, cause we don't know exactly what we're gonna purchase. But absolutely, you know, I would, you know, I want to make sure that the fire chiefs are, are sitting at a table just like the sheriff and I and, and Loudoun City Public Safety Director and Deputy Chief. I mean, we, we want to make sure that we, we do it right the first time, because again, it's a, it's a commitment to ensure we've got the best, um, center for decades. And so we just want to do it one time, because who knows when we'll have any money again. I mean, that's the, the reason we've never done, ever been able to do it just at the Linnor City local level, is because we didn't have the, A, we didn't have the property. And B, we didn't have the money.
And the training facility, would it give opportunity if you needed to set another base up for nine-one-one or whatever?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So I forgot about that. So the other thing that we felt like was very important, uh, when we built the building is to at least establish a very small room in the building to do a offsite, we'll call it a brick and mortar offsite, but it's not gonna be brick and mortar. We'll call it red, red iron, uh, offsite. So all we currently have, uh, is if we have a catastrophic event that affected the city of Loudoun and/or the nine, the current nine-one-one center, such as a tornado, which would be the most probably likely scenario. If a tornado hit the city of Loudoun and struck our building, even though it's, it's, it's rated for, I think it, uh, maybe up to an F five, but if we lost our tower and we lost our communications, the only thing we currently have to, to reestablish nine-one-one services in Loudoun County is our, is our mobile trailer.
Trailer.
Um, which is, and it's twenty, about twenty years old.
It probably got smashed in the tornado. It's got nine-one-one.
And if it's up there, that's right, cause we don't have a, we don't have a proper place to store. So if we, so I did talk to Rose. Uh, she did talk to her, uh, IT and her, uh, software company, that we would be able to establish an offsite, which would be, we could easily put it in that building, which we could put, uh, you know, she said, she said three consults. So she would, she gave, she gave an example during, hopefully we never have COVID ever again, but during COVID, most counties that had an offsite brick and mortar, they would split the dispatch up. most counties that had an off-site brick and mortar, they would split the dispatch up where that way you didn't have cross-contamination, like right now, if, you know, we had three or four dispatchers working, if one person contaminated and got that whole shift sick, then the whole shift had to go home, and she did have that curve one time. So, it just, it would serve a, and, and it would be, it would, that would be an expense, it would be funded not out of this money. We would give them the space and the building, and then the nine-one-one board would have to find funding, man.
I lead that, I led that absolutely where everything was at.
Would your facility require a, a daily staffing person or persons to?
I don't, I don't think so, current, I don't think we would have.
I know we're going where we've never been before and it's hard to answer questions, but I just.
I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't see that being with, with technology currently, like I know for the city, we've got a scheduling, uh, app that, that, um, that I can just pull up and tell you who's working today, who's working three months from now. I think we would just probably put together some type of either app or, or put a, even, where everybody could communicate within a training, uh, instructors and, and, uh, inside the county, and then they could just look at the app and put in their, put in their, their days that they needed.
Have y'all, have y'all pretty much decided what needs to be in the bill or what it's going to be as far as in the bill?
Well, I've just got some rough stuff, just, like I said, I wanted to present that on Tuesday to, to all the members of public safety. And so basically, what I've come up with, just on a rough, just a rough first lay, uh, layout is the building would be eighty by a hundred and twenty-five, which would be under the, under roof. The, the range itself would be, uh, forty by a hundred and five. It would be a basically building, a building inside the metal structure. So, it would be, there would be footers, there would be port on, out of, out of the gate. We, we would have poured concrete block walls inside that building. And then the range manufacturer comes in and puts ballistic paneling throughout and seals that up. And then, and it puts the, the trap and, and.
I know you, you mentioned a fire tower, and that would be a, a separate from, from the building.
Yes.
And train for firemen and so forth, is there anything else that would be, any kind of outdoor activity? Ever have the thoughts of maybe an outdoor pistol range, firing range, uh, conjoined to it? Or any other outdoor activity training besides that?
EVOC. So, we would, we would be doing EVOC, so we would have a, we would have a driving track, so we could.
Is that that little creature on Star Wars? No, it has EVOC, what's EVOC?
Yeah, so EVOC would be emergency vehicle operation, so, so what, we have to do that with every emergency vehicle in the county. Fire trucks, big trucks, little trucks, police cars, SUVs, we all have to do that every, every year. So, right now, currently, we do classroom training, we go to Blount County and use their driving track. In this facility and in my, in my plan was to also buy a simulator, uh, that's set up for police or fire. And, and then the tower that you spoke of, yes, that is a, is it thirty-five feet tall?
Fifty by fifty pad.
So, it sits on a fifty by fifty pad, and it's got the ability for, we would have a fire hydrant out there, so they could train, hook it up to the fire hydrant. They, they, it's got all the different stairwell and, and, uh, landings, as well as a simulated roof where they can actually simulate, well, not simulate, actually cut through the roof to attack a fire from there.
I'm just, I'm, uh, I'm just asking those questions that, you know, and would there possibly be anything that would go on down there that would upset the people that live there as far as noise or anything?
No, that, we would, we would never do an outdoor range, the, I tested, I went to Maribor and, and looked at their facility and let, let them shoot an AR fifteen.
Where are they shooting at, they're off three-twenty-one?
No, theirs is actually, you know where the old driver's license testing center was off, uh, in Maribor?
Home Avenue?
Oh, yeah, maybe Home Avenue, you know where Target, the Target Shopping Center is there?
I saw it was have rubber.
It's out of Loudoun County, I don't know where.
So, it, and it's in, it's in a residential area, but, but an AR fifteen being fired inside sounded like a muffled handgun.
Well, they've got, and, and if it's still active right on three-twenty-one, just past the county line when you go by.
That's a private one.
Is that a private one?
Yeah, and it's out.
It's outdoor.
That's where they shoot the big ones.
Big cannons, yeah, they have tanks and.
Does every one of our departments have someone authorized and trained to train?
I know our folks, I'll let, I'll let Chief Martin answer that.
So, in the fire service, we all have a dedicated training officer. So, each department has a dedicated training officer who is required to document each member's training. And each member in this, every department in this county is required two hundred and forty hours a year training. That's a lot of training. Especially when you pull out trucks out of the bay and set tables up and turn them sideways and you try to crawl through the concrete. This training center, uh, when you can come down there, everything's set up, you just plug and play, bring your apparatus, whatever you need to do. Currently, uh, Linnor City has to go to Alcoa, along with Loudoun City, because we have auto aid together. So, we schedule two days a year to go to the, in Alcoa for drill field training is what it's called. And for our ISO points, that's the greatest point you can get in training. We have company training, uh, uh, all kinds of different other things, but if you can get drill field training, that is the key to getting you a good ISO curve, which actually, Linnor City has a class two, and Loudoun City is a class three. They're within a point of being a class two. So, that training has paid off for us. Now, Teleco Village piggybacks on us and goes with us now to Alcoa. This, this is just a win-win for our whole county and especially our, our public safety responsibilities.
If you're in training over in Alcoa and you had a major or something going over here, how long does it take you to get back from where you're at?
Hot truck or ladder truck?
It's going to be a haul.
Forty minutes, forty-five minutes.
So, a lot can happen in forty-five minutes.
When we do this training, half of our department is left at, at our station, the other half goes training in a hot swap. And the other half goes over there and the other half stands by for training. It's just a logistical nightmare, to be honest with you, but that's what we have to do.
You can't leave your county, you can't leave your territory unmade.
You cannot leave your, your city or your county unprotected.
I'd like, I'd like, when you get some concrete numbers closer to what it's actually going to be, I'd like to hear a little more about it once you, uh, decide whether, you know, if you got the funding and, you know, so forth. You supplied a lot of information tonight, and like, man, I, I, you know, it's, it's a wonderful idea. I, you know, I think it's good, but again, uh, like you get, we, we can come and say, it's going to cost this, this, and this amount and this amount, and we can kind of get a firm grip on what we need to do or if we can do, help you with.
We had also talked about incorporating safety classes for kids, you know, bicycle safety, fire safety, um, you know, incorporating safety for the kids in the community.
Shooting fireworks safely on the forty-two.
I think it'd be a great asset for Loudoun County. Part of my concern would be, let's say the city council of Loudoun votes to not contribute. Half of my district is the city of Loudoun, so if I contribute arper funds, where does that leave the city of Loudoun? If, if, if they, if the city didn't vote to give any money, but I give my money, half of my constituents live in city limits. I want Loudoun City to be able to benefit.
Well, I, I forgot that, that's, I'm so glad you said that, because I had that on my, I didn't, I don't ever have no's, so, forgive me.
Maybe you should.
I, well, I've tried, man, I've tried. I can't do, I can't do nothing, I can't. So, thank you for, so yes, so another thing you could do is you could designate, uh, with, with, with your, obviously you all get to make, but you, you could designate that you want your funds to go for the city of Loudoun since your district, and it's kind of like their district, their whole district's in the city limits. And, or you could designate for fire service. If you said, I'm, I've only, I've got fifty thousand dollars left and I want to buy the, the burn box. So, I, I mean, at the end of the day, it really, it's, it's, we just, we're trying to get that pot of money, uh, to a point to where we know we can build the, the center. So, yes, you could, you could do that.
Commissioner James and I have, have allocated a vast majority of our funds, so we do have a small amount left. If we did choose to, you know, donate to this cause, which I think is a wonderful cause, and I'll definitely support you all in, in your efforts of giving your money. But, I mean, is, is, is what we go, what we're going to contribute enough to, to cover the, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Like a third designated to two fifty.
And they don't do it, and I give thirty grand or something.
Right, 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 and that's, and that's obviously why we're here tonight, is to try to iron some of this out, so. And that's why I would ask if, you know, if there's people that have got money left, you know, if we could get, if we could reach that goal, uh, which, and that's.
Looks like tonight you left with a million from Bill and Rosemary.
Yes.
You had a million, is what you said early on, you had one point with the land, we took the land out.
Loudoun County Sheriff said he'd.
Personally, personally.
How much?
Fifty percent of his salary, I believe.
Fifty percent of his salary, a night and year.
If this is a test for fraud.
He said he'd give up his ass away for it.
Yeah.
Careful what you're going to say, that comes up.
Put him in a high-stress situation, put him in the burning box for just a second, and it's a whole new perspective.
Well, it should go ahead.
I'll go, I'll go when we put Buddy in all this stuff, I want to watch him in the burn box.
I've been there much longer than I'm going to.
I can tell you what a benefit it would be for the sheriff's office, I think the owner has around forty employees, we have over a two-hundred-and-twenty. All of them are certified in the firearms, got to go down there for P range, which is a rec.
It also just sold.
Yeah, there's some issues with it, and then you talk about EPA and the land and everything like that, that's probably don't even want to get into. With the EVOC, all of our deputies would have to have EVOC to operate emergency vehicles. We go to Blount County, we have to schedule, uh, Blount County uses their facility, they do own training academy over there. And we did talk about some safety programs and whether it can be used for the bus service or whatnot, you know, with that simulator and things of that nature. It'd be a benefit for everybody, I mean, all the fire services, you know, it touches every part of the county, every district within the county where you have a fire service and obviously sheriff's offices, uh, has jurisdiction everywhere. So, it helps us, and you know, I've committed to extra training for our deputies where we shot one time a year, but we're going to start shooting four times a year, because our guys have to be trained to be able to protect themselves and others be proficient in that skill. And if you don't use it, you lose it, so we're doing it one time a year. This would make it so much easier, because we're having to take people, you know, we, we've hired, like, I think we set a budget, we've hired twenty-nine employees since September one. Twenty, a lot of them have been in correction books, to have to get those people certified and carry the firearm and training, and the more proficient they can get, the better. So, this would just be like a win-win for everybody, and it helps, it will touch every citizen in Loudoun County in the county, no matter what district they're in. So, like with the, the chiefs here, I support a hundred percent, I think it's something we tried fifteen years ago, and it just grew and a meeting just grew out of control, where you have two or three employees for the facility and it just, it was a, it was a mess. But I, I have seen some of the work that it all has done, specifically in the city, doing project manager and saving money, doing that, it's phenomenal of that. I think with the support from the county, we can actually have the driving track and I'll keep that in-house, where it'd be a benefit for all of us.
Well, it's gotten quite a bit larger tonight, just while we've talked from where we started to where we're at. So, what you're talking about the last time, it's, we, and your three acres, you've got are pretty full now.
Yeah, no, it's.
Towers and driving courses and safety.
That's not part of the original plan, so it will help every emergency service, whether you're fire or police.
I just think you don't have enough acre, I think you're going to need more acres.
We've got potential for more if we.
Take zip tabs.
Sheriff, you mentioned that, hey, Sheriff, you mentioned that Blount County has this training facility and then they, they certify, but they have their own academy now for their own officers, could, could this thing grow into something like that, or is that, is that pretty much acknowledged?
I mean, they got, you know, that's a lot of, a lot of money, a lot of personnel, they have, yeah, that's something I think we want to touch. But in-house, like I said, we all have a general departmental instructor, we have one, they all work together, they all have it mandated. And mandated training is, just keeps growing and growing, where our forty hours of in-service, in-service every year, it would surprise me, we're going to have, they'll have to push that in the next ten or fifteen years to two weeks, because they have so much mandated training. The other stuff that would be the hands-on, the, the practicals that we do, it's almost impossible to get those in in forty hours. And then you're paying overtime and get that training done, so your, you know, your calls for service, we have almost thirty thousand calls a year with the sheriff's office. That's a lot, and then technically, depending on that top of training as well, so.
So, if the, had the building shared, does that cut out the overtime training?
We've had that some, we've had some creative schedules, uh, we use our SROs when they're out of school to cover, uh, patrol while we try to, uh, train at a shift, so they're better, they work better together. It would definitely cut out some of that, some of the travel, you know, you got people on to Blount County all the time, it's.
Wearing apparel in the vehicles.
Taking it out over there, you know, back and forth, and they're training, getting those spots is, is tougher and tougher. So, another issue that, or another bridge that we crossed in the meeting was talking about agency sponsor and activities. So, always, we've done a citizens academy for years, we can still use that training facility, come over to citizens academy where we take on driving track, we let them shoot our firearms, and we have in-house training, the simulator would be a great asset for that. So, it would help our community, you know, everybody knows that's one of the best programs that, that we have in the sheriff's office. We're looking to start that in the summer or early fall, they have this year, so that'd be a benefit to us to keep it in the county as well, because we train over and take the whole citizens here. And that's one of the biggest questions is asked with the citizens academy, you're talking forty citizens of the county coming to our sheriff's office. We tell them, we, they're very impressed, surprised we can do all we do. But when we say we gotta go to the driving track to fire range, we have to go to a different county, they're like, you don't have your own, and like, we don't, we just, you know, and just be an opportunity to actually, I want to have some of that.
Thank you, guys. All right, thank you for coming.
Can I say one more thing here? We were talking about fire towers and burn boxes, they do have fire towers that have burn boxes in them, they're obviously more expensive. The tower we're talking about is, is one of the basic towers, you can get some money, if you've got more money to build on this, we can get a better quality tower with burn boxes in it to do all that, so.
Richard said he wanted to be the first one to try the burn box.
We'd do whatever.
You'll enjoy it, trust me. Anyway, I appreciate you all coming. As you know, I'm a big supporter of public safety, I've committed some of my five hundred thousand already. I'll take a look at what I got left over, I would ask every commissioner to do it. I know some of them committed money to other projects. To Commissioner Quillan and Jenkins, I say thank you for taking your donation to them. I think it's doable, just a matter of getting all the numbers together.
Thank you.
Thank you. And no, Jimmy, you're not getting sixty-two Escalades.
He done laughed.
Oh, he laughed. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaver?
At our last, uh, commission meeting, I think I was caught a little off-guard, I don't know why I would have been, but I think maybe everybody was, when Tracy gave her a very eloquent farewell, uh, it was, uh, very bittersweet. Take, we'll see Aaron at the helm tonight, she's now voted as the chief officer, so she's got some shoes to fill. But Tracy passed out a letter after the meeting, and she may have said this while she was there, I'll be honest, I didn't hear a lot of what she said, because I was, again, a little bit dumbstruck, but she passed out this letter, aside from saying how much our fund balance is now, she told us how much we started out with, and I was here, I was here when she was hired, and we had to borrow money from the board of education about every quarter to pay our bills, because we didn't have enough money. A million dollars, you can't operate on a million dollars, because you have to pay your bills. So, we, we did a tax anticipation loan at least twice a year, if not more often, just to be able to pay the bills, and you heard Tracy tell her story. But in the last sentence here, it says, "That evening in two thousand and four, I promised county commission that I would work diligently with integrity and honesty. It is now my sincere desire that the ma- that Mayor Bradshaw and this county legislative body accept notification of my intent to retire with unanimous consensus that my promise was fulfilled." Those, I don't know there's any way we could not say that her promise was fulfilled when she sat there in two thousand and four and said, "I'll do it." She said, "I'll do it," and you heard her talk about the findings and that sort of stuff. So, uh, I don't need a vote, I would like to see Buddy do a proclamation that's worded exactly like this last sentence right here, that we unanimously have a consensus that she did what she said she would do. And like I said, I, had I realized this is what she was saying last month, or by our last meeting, we would have had this, that instant. I, I just didn't hear it, didn't know it, so if you would take care of putting whatever that is together to add along to whatever else we're doing, I'd appreciate that, because that's all she asked for anywhere in this letter, was just to say job well done. I'd appreciate that because that's all she asked for anywhere in this letter was just to say, "Job well done."
That'll be the third whereas in proclamation.
Yeah, I got mine to talk, you know, I was on there for whereas. Yeah, my name was right on the agenda, right under Buddy's for whereas, and they took it off.
All right, he removed it.
Buddy, will you take care of that?
Absolutely.
April third. Okay. Thank you.
We'll have it ready for the thirty-first.
That's fine. Erin, you're up.
Okay.
Welcome to the NFL.
Sorry, I started tearing up again. I'm really sorry about that, for some reason I can't control that.
When a budget starts, you'll tear up a lot.
For a completely different reason.
Yes, definitely.
So, in, in regards to what happened during budget committee. There was a consideration to, as a recommendation to approve three grants with no matching funds, LIL grant, DGA, and DOE, and the budget committee recommended this. There was a consideration to approve statutory bond for the director of accounts and budgets. Budget committee approved this. There was a consideration of recommendation to approve, um, a builder's risk insurance additional cost, budget committee approved this.
That was for the new election commission addition.
Yes.
Yes.
There was a consideration of recommendation to approve additional funding on the courthouse for the alternates, which Mr. Klein Schmidt mentioned earlier. Budget committee approved to, to this, which led to an amendment. There was a consideration of recommendation to acknowledge the, the TCRS rate for the upcoming year, which has not changed, budget committee, uh, recommended to do this. And then in regards to amendments, there were multiple line adjustments in Fund One, which is county general fund. There was, um, a request for a hundred thousand dollars to go from fund balance to go for gasoline in the sheriff's department. Along with all of the line adjustments, budget committee approved to do these things. And drug control fund one point two, there was some line adjustments, and there was an additional thirty-three thousand added to revenue. And then four thousand to come out of that to go into law enforcement equipment, budget committee approved this. As far as ARPA, there was line adjustments. In Fund One Thirty-One, there was multiple line adjustments, there was two. In capital projects fund one seventy-one, there was amendments to pay damages at two of our buildings. Increase the revenue in CAR for some money that we received. Increase some revenue in the bond for interest that's been received. Add in a revenue budget for insurance recovery at the courthouse. Add in the expense that Mr. Klein Schmidt mentioned earlier about the alternates. And then there was an additional amendment to cover the free storm damage to the health department and animal shelter. Budget committee approved this. And that's all I have.
And for the first time in at least nine years, I think, there was nothing to do with school, there was no school.
No one forty-one, two, or three.
No.
I just made it be twice the month next month. Mr. Chairman, let me, let me, uh, say to William Rosemary, technically speaking, what we all voted to do was all ARPA funds spent expenditure was supposed to come through budget first and then become full, full commission. They haven't been to budget, no big deal. But are you asking to have that on the April third agenda as we've done the others? Or you want it on the April third agenda to vote on?
We'd like to.
Okay, I mean, again, everything's supposed to come through budget, the rest of them have, but if y'all don't want to.
Okay, do we need to?
Yes.
Is the budget committee here, is anybody, does any of the budget members?
I don't have any.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. Put it on April third under yours, Erin.
And we, we now have gotten the second five in the bank, right?
Yes, do you mind sending me some type of email or something? So I have written documentation saying that that's how you want to commit your funds. That way I can write up the resolution and have it prepared for when we have an execution.
It has to have a full resolution on the whole batch, right?
Yeah, that's how it's gotta be done. Anything else?
Yes, the, um, audit committee.
Uh-oh.
Met today. And there was one finding. But that was it.
Was there any recommendation for punishment for whoever caused that finding?
Somebody offered him to be ousted.
Ousted?
Yeah.
Was that William ousted, was William Willbott ousted?
That vote didn't pass. So the, the county's gonna work with Solid Waste, which we discussed in the last Solid Waste commission meeting, to work on procedures to make sure we follow the statute thirty-seven, Percy law.
One other budget item we did tonight was, uh, Erin began to set up the calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget prep process.
Gasp.
Who, who's chairman fraud, are you chairman fraud? Uh, that needs to be under his name for the actual meeting to be recognized and approved by the local county commission.
I thought we had to take a further step, I even thought we had to contact the state or something.
No, they look at it every year when they do it.
Okay, so amendments where the minutes are at. I knew there was something involved with the state because we just started doing that a few years ago.
So we had to vote on it?
Approved it for, that's good.
Will that fall under you?
No, I can't, I can't have anything to do with it.
It'll fall under Adam Walker.
Yep. I can't even serve one.
And that was after five straight audits, when then we got five clean audits, is that correct?
One out of five.
Five in a row, could have been six. I'm not saying it, I mean.
Moving right along.
So Adam, you, you know me to, what I need to.
It's gotta be under Adam.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we can go home.
We can go home.
Don't forget if anybody wants to go TC to say, let me, let's shoot me or they.
Lord have mercy.